I'm not asking any of that.
Okay.
Do you have completed, properly completed, application forms?
We believe so, yes ma'am. That application-
I don't see anything in front of me. And I've been through all this stuff and nobody else seems to have anything. The application has never been properly filled out and filed. It has been told that to both Mr. Dotson and Mr. Ballinger. We cannot make a decision yes or no, either way, in any way regardless of any judicial order without a properly filled out and filed application.
And if I may address that point, we believe it is properly filled out and complete and accurate. If we look at codes, if we look at the ordinance for animal draw vehicles, and if we look at 4.28.04, it basically lays out the process. And by the terms of the ordinance, once it's filed with the city clerk, the application for a franchise in this case is filed with the city clerk, that application is deemed complete and accurate when the city clerk reviews that and presents it to the council for consideration. And I believe that once it's presented to the council for consideration, it's, the initial part has been, the initial test of accuracy has been met, that it meets the remaining qualifications in the code.
Um, okay. We have several points that were never properly filled out on the application, and this has been ongoing. If you don't have any additions, then we are still missing a permanent depot address. We are missing, are the horses going to be kept within city limits or out, which is a minor one. Carriage dimensions, we have to have that in writing. Photos and whatnot don't work. We need all of that kind of stuff. We have to have emergency numbers. We need to have knowledge on if the owner is going to be in the area when the horses are going through the streets in case of an emergency. That's just those basic things right there, and that's not even touching upon the change of the routes between the Upper Loop and Main Street and all of that. But looking at 4.28.04, just on the one part you did, we've got a line right here. No franchise shall be granted to any applicant whose application is found to be incomplete or inaccurate. If it is not complete regardless of judicial order, we cannot make a decision. We have to have a full, complete application. Every single little dot and cross T must be done before we can decide.
David.
And I appreciate the application and everything. I, I'm honestly thinking if we should, like to raise for council that we give consideration to putting on hold any of our franchises and directing our city attorney to do the necessary research into this process of franchising with Animal Drawn and Taxis and any other franchises the city has, and come back to us with the best wording and the best practices and the necessary changes to have a very accurate, up-to-date, and comprehensive franchise ordinance that we can follow so that there is no ambiguity in the future.
Josh.
Um, okay. I agree with, Mickey and I agree with David. However, we have this writ of mandamus, which I, I'm not a lawyer, so I am conferring with our city attorney here, that says we have to vote on this tonight. And since we cannot approve this because it's not complete and it doesn't follow our law, and I think in the, I think we really do have to follow the law absolutely to the letter in this case, then what do we do? We, we are ordered to vote on it, so, but we can't approve it, so do we vote anyhow? What do we do here?
You, I think that it would be appropriate at this point for the city council to, if they wish to follow the judge's order, which judge's orders are expected to be followed, would also, and to follow the city code, which is the law of the city. You take a vote, and if a sufficient number of the city council members believe that it is deficient, or if there is other grounds that this, that particular councilman or council members see as necessary to make future changes, then your appropriate vote may be in the negative. But that is something that each individual councilman is probably going to have to make their own mind about.
Okay.
And, and use that, or any other information which they feel appropriate to vote in either the positive or the negative.
Mr. McClung?
Um, I would like to direct this question to the city clerk, and that is, uh, the list of, of inadequate information on the application that we have here, is that, were they advised of that? Has Mr. Dotson been advised that his application was not complete and-
And so was Mr. Ballinger.
And asked to-
Yes. If I may back up just a little bit, in November, when discussion of the franchise was not even on the agenda, but it was discussed anyway, it became clear, and Mr. Ballinger agreed that there were aspects of it that needed work, particularly the map. And... When I went back through the code, I saw a couple of things on the application that had been added, the last round of codification, that weren't actually on the blank application. So I added them to the application. They're, you know, not ragingly significant, but they're on there. I sent one to Mr. Ballinger, I sent one to Mr. Dotson. I clarified, one line said business address, and so I just clarified it so he'd understand that that is Eureka Springs Depot address. The dimensions, they all have copies of the code. The code makes it clear that the dimensions are essential. Those were not provided. But it's really the map that's the major challenge. And Mr. Ballinger stood here and acknowledged that the map that was presented in November couldn't work, and there has not been any new map since then. What I did is take blank maps and fill in what Mr. Dotson had listed. And so that's what you see on your last page, but you'll see gaps where clarification has not been-
It'd take like two hours to do that then.
Well, if, if you go, I mean, I could go more deeply into that, but let me just leave it at the map is a major problem.
Inserted.
Attorney again. So we have the writ from the judge requesting us to vote. So do we actually have to vote, or can we refer close the franchise and refer it to you?
I think the appropriate action is probably that you need to take a vote.
Take a vote.
Since the writ of mandamus has not been challenged in court for that purpose. It has been responded to by the city, but it has not been challenged as to its authority.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the franchise application for route number two. Is that the route?
What is that?
Main Street.
Main Street.
Main Street route.
Even though stuff hasn't been done.
We have the ability to vote. I'm making a motion which will require us to vote.
We need a second.
Second.
All right. We got discussion on that motion. Mickey.
Okay. The law is the law. If it isn't complied with, we ignore it. Judicial orders do not matter when you do not have a proper law-installed situation. We can't vote on something that is illegal or that is not properly put before us. It's like it doesn't even exist. So without a properly filled out application, it's as if, as if these two gentlemen weren't even here. This is basically what it comes down to. Not our fault that things were not properly done. And I agree with what David said before, but that's for future stuff. We can't judge this vote or this action on what we need to get done later. We have to go because of the mandamus, we have to go by what is here, and if we do not have a thorough, proper form, we will be breaking the law. And I won't break the law.
Would it-
Josh.
Would it be out of order to call for the question, or did that, what you did effectively?
No.
I want to vote on this, so I'll say, I'll call for the question if nothing else.
Say, good.
Okay, we got a second on that?
Here.
All right. All those in favor calling for the question, sing five, sing aye.
Actually, you should take that a roll call.
A roll call. We will have a roll call on this question.
This is your name on the question, right?
This is calling the question.
For calling the question.
Make sure I get this straight.
Is this, we're voting on the question, or we're voting on the-
We're voting on calling the question.
Oh. Do we want to call?
End of discussion.
Okay.
To end discussion.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six, zero.
All right, all those in favor have called, that passes. So now then the motion's been made in a second to approve the route for the Main Street.
To accept the application.
To accept the application. I think we probably need to go by a roll call just for general purposes.
Ms. Elder?
Present.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Present.
Basically, it's a negative vote, and the motion fails.
Moving right along.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, repair the parking lot by the auditorium.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to discuss, Mr. McClung.
Um, I'm not really sure what the process would be, but going back to Mr. Perkypile and, and his inspection of it, and he had, you know, kind of given a ballpark figure on it, and, and so I don't know if it would be Jimmy Jones or somebody of that nature that we would contact, or maybe even just, maybe Duane, you know, the Public Works Director might, uh, I don't know if we do outside contracting for that, but I think we need to look into that right away and, and to repair those two spots as needed that are currently non-producing, income, non-income producing, and a, and a potential hazard, I suppose.
James?
I, I would move to see if Public Works could do the work themselves before we put it out for bid.
Okay. Mickey?
Well, the big contention is who's responsible for fixing it, us or Quorum Court?
We are.
The surface. We're responsible for the surface.
Yeah, we do, we're responsible for the surface, not below surface. I mean, this, this has been-
It's our, it's our, it's our responsibility.
Okay, but the other thing was Dee said he was going to go back in because it's been quite a while, it's been, wow, five, six years, I think, since he's been in there, and he said he wanted to go in there and look again.
The mitigation team was in there recently.
Oh, I forgot about that part.
We were, we were on council for two years, and he went in after we started, so.
Yeah, well, he started working on this when Dana was still in. Anyway.
We have a motion, I'll second it.
When was the last time that Dee was in there is my question then?
It's been with him.
Was he with the mitigation team?
He was.
Well, wait a minute here, we got a motion, and we got it seconded now. Do you have a discussion on doing this or not?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. We were supposed to have somebody like Dee look at it to see if it actually had to be repaired, as opposed to he's talking about just moving something around.
Well, Duane, Duane can look into that and give us a report back, and before we spend any money, we'll, we'll report back to the council. City attorney's got a comment?
I would like to suggest to the council that when you make your motion, or when you approve your motion here in a moment, that there be a notice made to the county judge, since it is technically their real estate, before you actually move dirt.
Oh, sure, yeah, we certainly notify, put them on notice that-
Put them on notice that it's being done.
Sure.
I'll amend that motion to include a letter to the county judge as to any actions that we would take regarding the parking lot.
Second that. Okay.
So we're just giving up on who's responsible?
We know who's responsible, Mickey.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, what, what we're doing then, in essence, is, is going ahead and making a decision to take care of it, and that's what we're going to notify the county, that we're, we're beginning the process to get the parking lot repaired.
Right.
The motion that James made was-
To move to see if Public Works can do the work, and he amended to include a letter to the county.
Okay. So we'll report by next time whether the Public Works can take care of this, and if they can do it, or if we need to go ahead and get, you know, the problem with putting this out for bid is, it's not, you can't do it. I mean, it's probably going to be under the money anyway, so we can select Jimmy Jones, or we'll get ahold of somebody else if Public Works can't do it, so.
What if it's a zillion dollars?
It won't be.
It's not. All right, so any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye. All right, any pose?
Present.
Come on.
Five, zero, one.
Um, update on the new hospital.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Unless Mr. McClung or the mayor has heard anything, I would say that Allegiance rushed to get us to make a decision about the sewer, which the city did, and we met our requirements that was required of us, we've heard nothing back from Allegiance. In the current state of healthcare in the United States with what's going on with the Affordable Care Act, some changes in, looks like me coming along with critical access hospitals, it, I think it's highly questionable. However, I think the public needs to be aware that the city stepped up to the plate, the city investigated, city found out that we could in fact get that sewer line out there to that hospital, and we are only waiting for Allegiance to come up with their part of the equation, which they have not done in the timeframe of which they said they would. So that's where we're at.
Mr. McClung?
I just, uh, I have nothing that I have heard personally. I was going to ask Mr. Weaver if they've had any contact with him at all.
I have had no contact.
The last, the last information we had from them, that they were in communication or in discussion with their bankers trying to, to attain the financing, which I already, I just had assumed that they were past that, but apparently not. So I don't, I don't-
Let me interject here, I can bring you all up to date a little while. I've made the phone call to Chris Bariola, and got a return call today right before the meeting. And the status right now is, as both Mr. McClung and David talked about, they are now concerned about the cost of this. So they are meeting with the architects Tuesday, the local architects out here Holiday Island, and getting with their cost estimator to get a cost estimate finalized, so they can take it to the bank to make sure they have, they can get financing. And at that point, we'll find out if it's a go or not. I did encourage Chris to, we have a hospital meeting next Tuesday, Monday, at noon. At one, I'll get this right, okay. Next, we have a hospital meeting at one o'clock, and I encourage Chris to be there by all means to update everybody and go from that. So as far as he's concerned, you know, they are, they are spending money, I mean, with the architect and engineers, so it's, it's, it's not a dead deal yet, so. But I think, as David talked about, you know, the city's certainly stepped up to the plate and did everything we were supposed to do, so more will be revealed.
Thank you.
So, I have one thing. Can we keep this an active item for the next meeting?
Absolutely. Sure.
You betcha.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the business, I'm going to recuse myself and ask our new mayor pro temp to come up and take the chair.
Start off by asking- Asking myself for a motion from the floor, which I'll go right ahead and make a motion to assign ordinance, this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading. Any seconds?
I second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. McClung?
Okay, first of all, they've given us two different ones.
There's different wording.
Yeah, there's two different wording in the section, in section one.
One is for just Leatherwood.
That's the first one we're going to do. It's a member of the motion. What you have, if I may interject-
Please do.
If, pro temp, don't throw things at me. You have two versions. One version would allow that the mayor could continue in the capacity he's served for many years, working for various departments, commissions, helping the architectural future of the city. The other one would allow for him to continue to complete the projects he's currently on only. So- One version would, would limit it to what is open business, and the other one would allow it to continue throughout his four-year term, unless otherwise ended at some point by the council.
Which one is which, because I'm not seeing what you said.
Here's the, here's the one here for the prior experience, must be the one for Leatherwood.
It's the last, last two sentences.
Which, which one?
The last portion of the section one-
Section one.
Will indicate which it is.
I don't see that.
But one says any current project that was limited to the current. The other one has not the wording of current project, but indicates-
Current term.
Throughout the, throughout the continuation of the term unless otherwise addressed by council.
Okay, because boy, did I ever change that one.
Mr. Snyder, you got a question?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that one because-
I thought I had it.
He's, okay, so what you're saying for section one on that one is that he's allowed to continue the job already active in regards to being tied in with the city, which of course is illegal normally. And that's all that this one is for, is strictly to finish that one job.
Whatever jobs that may be ongoing at this point, yes.
That are already physically active.
That he is already employed by, or has been employed by the city prior.
Because it just doesn't sound right. It sounds like this is letting him do it forever.
The other one, the other one does that.
Yeah, unless later altered by council, which means every time there can be a thing.
Mr. McClung?
I wasn't finished. Would it not be easier under section one that first sentence? Specifically authorized to continue to do business with parks on the present activity until its conclusion.
That's basically what it says already.
I mean, take out that whole middle sec, that whole section of the same nature projects here and yada, yada. Okay, with the parks commissioned throughout the remainder of the current project until its completion. Would that be more specific and?
I don't know that it would change the actual meaning of the, the section at all. If you wanted, limit the wording that way, I would be certain before I passed it, if I were you, whether that is the only project, and I assume it is because it's the only one I was contacted about, but I don't know that it is.
I know, but we can ask. But it's, my real concern is, this is a major law situation. Continuing something through its completion is fine, that's not a problem. But if that leaves the door open to then do something else coming down the road, then it's a problem.
The other one does that.
Yeah.
Mr. McClung? I'll let you finish up. Mr. McClung?
Okay. I also believe that, that, that the mayor is also working on the, on the building out there for Public Works. So that's a second project that's, that he's working on. So that's, uh, so there's two. I don't know, and I guess we should ask him if there's any others. And he says no, okay, so there's, so there's the two. I don't know. I don't know historically here or anyplace else what, what path should be taken. I understand that, you know, for continuity, that these two for sure he should continue on, but I don't know what, what, uh, kind of a loss on, on going beyond that.
All right, Ms. Elder?
I would like, oh, we have two different ordinances here. I would like to consider them separately because I do have a comment on the other ordinance, so could we please just assign a number to this ordinance, the one that applies to the Leatherwood Pavilion and the, and the other building you mentioned, and pass that, and that makes it okay for him to finish those, and then consider the next ordinance, because I have some comments on that.
Mr. Mitchell?
I think if we pass this one ordinance allowing the, the two works, and I agree with Mr. McClung, we have a practitioner architect who's, who has a long history in this city, he's done a lot of work, and has, has been actively involved in, in two projects long, long before the election, and, and deserves the ability to finish those projects to completion despite being mayor. I would not be comfortable extending the ability to be an architect of, of note for any other projects after assuming mayor that has to do with the city. That would be to me a major breach of conflict of interest, but to continue the Public Works and the Park Pavilion is, is absolutely, makes total sense. He's way too involved to, to not continue to finish those projects.
I think for the sense of the appearance of propriety, that, that we should only address the current projects that are underway right now. I mean, at a later date, if, if there is another project, then we address that project at that time, but to give an open-ended thing, so I'm going to make the motion as stated that it be the one that on section one, last part of the sentence reading, current projects until its completion. Mr. McClung?
I have one question. Whenever, whenever these things come up, and we discuss them here about, you know, like the building is a yalice, you know, we need, we need to look at this and do this, and then was it always the mayor's position to hire the architect, or was that?
Yes.
It's not, it's not a part of the bid process or anything like that.
It's considered a professional service.
But it's, it's, it's not, I mean, I don't know what, what the percentage is, but like the Public Works building is originally talked about 120,000 or something like that. I mean, I don't know what fees are represented, or in that, and I don't know if that's our purvey to know, but-
In these unusual circumstances, which furthers what I'm getting from council, is that we not have an open-ended thing, given this unique circumstance, that the mayor also is an architect by trade, so-
Right.
We would in effect be approving each proj, each subsequent project-
Case by case.
-that discretion to go forward.
Okay. Just trying to get it clear in my mind, thank you.
Yes, Mickey?
I don't know why you're adding in that other part.
I'm not adding in another part.
Why, why you're even saying, we are talking about this because by law, the mayor cannot do business with the city.
Which is why we have an ordinance before us waving that-
Why are you adding on future stuff we can always discuss? No, we can't, it's against the law.
We didn't. It's not the ordinance that I've proposed.
Let's just deal with the ordinance and what's on track.
Okay, actually, it isn't. We don't want to get into the second ordinance, but I ran, I had my doubts about this. I talked to David Schoen at the Municipal League about it. He gave me some suggestions and some Arkansas statutes, so at a further date, we can bring this up if it comes up, but, and this one- of section one and said, including the Parks Commission and the storage building? And just limit it to those two projects, and so those are the only two projects that are ongoing.
Those are the only two projects that are ongoing, so that's implied by this ordinance.
Well, it's implied, I just wonder if people would be more comfortable if we said it out loud.
I think I understand what the current projects. Bruce, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's give Bruce a moment here.
Thank you for counseling. I just wanted to show you some of Mayor Berry's work. We're just so incredibly proud of the work he did for us. But, to up the ante somewhat, Mayor Berry is involved in a critical stage right now in our buildings. We have deadlines where we have to have our bid packets in, and what I would like to ask the council is if we could read this three times and pass an emergency clause.
This ordinance?
And I'll pass this around. Pardon me?
This ordinance?
For the Parks project, because we're right there at that stage where we have to have a bid packet put together before we can proceed with the work.
Mr. Mitchell.
What date do you have to have the bid package that you want us to declare it an emergency?
It's as soon as possible, we have a year.
I saw his work, I know it's good.
We have a year to complete the project from the date that we are generally awarded, which is the middle of December. And what I've found is that the longest part of these projects is generally putting together the bid packages and getting the bids put out, and we want to get this thing done as soon as possible, hopefully for opening.
So if we read it one and two times tonight, and then at the next meeting have the third reading, that's not timely enough for you?
I would, what we would prefer, because Mayor Berry has to start immediately on getting this bid packet put together, my preference and my asking is.
Put together now, during the next two weeks?
Pardon me?
Would the bid package be getting put together in the next two weeks?
I don't know if he could actually be paid for that time.
Paid after.
I don't know how this works.
No, I see the point.
So that's my request, you know, it's y'all's decision, but it is a time where we need the help.
Mr. McClung.
We could read it twice tonight, and then the second meeting of the month, do the third reading with the emergency clause at that point, because if you don't do the emergency clause, you get 30 days before it goes into effect. So, that would give any of the citizenry, if there was, you know, if some, that, you know, if there was some input, it would give us an opportunity to have that.
Mr. Snyder.
Okay. Everybody knows the mayor, everybody knows how awesome he is, everybody knows how great he is. I can't believe there'd be anybody in town who'd have a fit if we went ahead and did this all three in one meeting, and I can't believe I'm saying that. But seriously.
Well, this will be determined.
I mean, it makes so much sense to do.
This will be determined by what council's actions are here tonight.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right now, we have an ordinance. Did we get a second on it?
We did not.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a second on it. So the motion was to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading, and we have a second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, if you'd like us to say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2222. An ordinance providing for the employment of mayor to do business with the city of Eureka Springs while serving as mayor, whereas the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the laws governing limitations of a mayor being employed by or receiving funds from the city while serving as mayor and, whereas the current mayor has experience with providing goods and/or services to the city and its commissions prior to his election and, whereas in the opinion of the City Council, the mayor was elected by the electorate with full disclosure of his past relationship with the city and city's commissions. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the current mayor of the city of Eureka Springs is hereby specifically authorized to continue to do business of the same nature as his prior experience with the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and its commissions, including but not limited to the Parks Commission throughout the remainder of any current project until its completion. Section two repeal clause, all ordinance's resolutions and parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2222 on its first reading.
Second.
Discussion? I'll wait. All right, Mickey.
On the title part, I think we need to change the word "do," the employment of mayor to do business with the city, should change that to complete two started businesses with the city.
That's explained in the body of the ordinance. Mr. McClung.
Oh, I have nothing.
Oh, Mr. Mitchell.
Just a clarification question to be sure, because I know we have verbally identified, and that's what we will be holding to, the Public Works Building and the Parks Pavilion, but it says, but not limited to the Parks Commission throughout the remainder. I'm wondering, the words "but not limited to the Parks Commission," we haven't identified any other projects, but by the wording is there, it just wouldn't happen, because we haven't identified any, right? I mean, if all of a sudden.
The reason that wording was added to it was because at the time, I was unaware or did not remember that he was doing a project for the Public Works. And I wanted to specifically make it aware to the public through the wording of the ordinance, that there is an ongoing project with the parks, so that they have full disclosure through the ordinance. And you've now stated, I think, and anyone watching on camera and anyone that's going to read this, come the next few days, is going to see that there is also a second project.
And that's the limit of the scope.
And that should be the limit of the scope.
Thank you.
Mr. McClung.
Yeah, I was just going to say exactly what Tim just said, and that this meeting defines what those parameters are anyway, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder.
Section one could simply read that the current mayor of the city of Eureka Springs is hereby specifically authorized to continue to complete business on the two present activities until their conclusion.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. McClung.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going, did we vote for it? Did we pass it?
We passed it on its first reading.
Okay.
Mr. McClung.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to read ordinance, suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2222 by title only.
Second.
For a second.
Second. Rock call.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. DeBeau.
Yes.
Ms. Zeller.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
6-0, ordinance 2222, an ordinance providing for the employment of the mayor to do business with the city of Eureka Springs while serving as mayor.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2222 on its second reading.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I would hesitate to move on a third reading, there's always the possibility that it could be defeated on the third reading. I'll leave that up to council if they want to go ahead with it, but that does, that prospect plays out there.
Do we have to do that?
Well, you know, it's our discretion.
Right, well, do we have to do that?
To vote on it a third time or not, and we're talking about, we're talking about two weeks. And in the big picture, I think it's judicious to us in the community to wait for two weeks. And I don't think that's asking for too much. So unless council wants to go ahead with a third reading, I'll open the floor for anybody that want to make that motion.
Okay, he doesn't seem to think.
Two weeks or her.
If that's the case, I'll remove myself from the chair and have we call the mayor.
Thanks, James. All right, continuing on, we have now, I guess fluoride letter from Ms. Zeller and Mr. Mitchell.
Motion to discuss.
So moved. Because you got this motion, do we have a second?
Say again.
All right, so I'll move.
I can present this if you want, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all have a copy of this letter? I'll explain it to you. This is, because we have had so much local opposition to the chloride business, and since it's all in the hands of the Department of Health anyhow, I've done, I spent two weeks doing some pretty exhaustive research in this, and I think what this letter, the only thing this letter does is ask, it protects the people of Eureka Springs, because it asks the Board of Health to insist that any product that is added to our water be certified as absolutely free of any chemicals that are harmful. And I'll read it to you rather than paraphrasing it. What I had hoped was that if you approved this letter, what I want this to be is addressed to the new director of the state, the health state officer, the state health officer, and have it signed by, be on the mayor's letterhead and have it signed by the mayor and the members of the city council. And the purpose of it is to reassure the citizens of the Eureka Springs that we are doing due diligence in making sure that whatever the government decides to put in our water is absolutely safe and lead-free. And I have some very real doubts about the compound that Carol Boone is considering now, which is the only one they can find, because the analysis of the sodium silica fluoride that Preon, which is the Belgian company, prints on the internet, admits that it can have up to 50 parts per million of lead in it, and it is against Arkansas law to add lead to our public water. So that puts between, the Department of Health between a rock and a hard place, but this is what the letter says, and I'll read it, and can I read it? Will this take you a minute?
Point of order.
Yeah.
This really doesn't give us an avenue. I would suggest that Ms. Zeller present this to council in the form of a resolution. I mean, I don't know under what authority, just a letter.
No, it's just, we don't have the, no, for a resolution, we don't have the authority to do that. The state Board of Health has it.
I would suggest that if the council has read this letter, and if they feel positive to make a motion to approve the, go ahead and sign the letter, write the letter and sign it.
I make a motion to do what he just said.
You're right, James.
Second.
It's just a letter to the, to the director.
So we can do this just as a letter that we sign off on?
Yeah.
Yes.
But the action, what will be the action of the council? I mean, we can each individually sign the letter, and you can sign the letter too, but as a body, under what auspice are we delegating our authority to this document, is my concern?
I can.
It's not a ordinance, it's not a resolution.
We passed a resolution against.
We passed a resolution against fluoridating the water, so in my opinion, this is redundant.
No, it's not. It's a totally different angle and totally different issue.
Can I explain it?
I think it's.
Department, rather.
We all understand that the science behind all of this, we've been down this road many, many times before, and I'm concerned about the authority and how we go about lending our authority to this document.
Okay, can I respond to that?
Can the attorney answer that?
This is not an authority. This is due diligence, looking out for the health and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs by asking the state health department, which is in charge of this, to make sure that what they are putting in our water, which we have not, no, we're told to do this, we don't get to vote on this, we must do this, to make sure that what they are putting in here is free of lead and it's free of harmful ingredients, and to make, to further assure us to ask the company supplying the compound to accept responsibility for the analysis, and to have an independent analysis done also to make sure that this is safe. There are some very real doubts about the purity of this compound. It's, in fact, the company itself, its analysis, makes it very plain that it's likely to contain lead.
We're not, we're not.
And that's what we're doing. We're only asking the Department of Health to reassure us that they are doing due diligence. That's what this letter does.
Mr. McClung.
Well, I think before we or anyone on this council, as a councilperson or the mayor would sign this, I think the attorney would have to look at it and, because, you know, it's not drafted, it's not something that was drafted, you know, at the request of this body. It's bringing, brought to the body, and so I'm not sure that I'm willing to do that without having Mr. Weaver look at it and see if it's something that's within our parameter to do in the first place. And James is right, in that we have already done our due diligence in that with the resolution that we have.
No, that wasn't, we didn't approve it there. And it has nothing to do with this. The line in here explains it, therefore, we respectfully request that the Arkansas State Board of Health issue an order to strictly enforce the rules and regulations pertaining to public water systems as revised by the state board of health, et cetera, et cetera, pertaining to the requirements of section seven, paragraph G, approve chemicals, materials, equipment, and processes to wit. And it goes on to state that it has to be absolutely lead-free.
We understand that.
That's what we want.
Mr. Mitchell.
That's all, it's perfectly harmless, we're not assuming any authority, we're just asking them to do this, which they haven't done so far.
Mr. Mitchell.
Nobody's going to argue the science of fluoride, and we've heard it as nauseam to the point, and I don't think anybody disagrees, we don't want it, that's not the point. I think what we're wrestling with is how to present legitimately our frustrations that we do not want it added to our water. Repeatedly, we have asked, and repeatedly, it has continued to move forward. This letter is a different twist on everything that's been done to this point, because it's moving over and attempting to move, to my view, into the area of liability, that we are pointing out to the state health department, and maybe even Carol Boone, that if you come back and you don't tell us as a consumer that this water is not safe for humans, either by consumption or externally, or if you tell us it is, and then we find out it's not, I think they've opened themselves up to some potential liability, because they've promoted a product that is in fact harmful at some point. So, it would behoove, and evidently, in California, before the gentleman died, that has spearheaded fluoride for ages, we had a long talk on the phone, and we discussed that, and evidently, not that I always agree that California's the best example, but the fact is that there were many cities in California who utilized the fact that they could find no supplier of fluoride that would take on the fact that they said it was safe for humans. And because they couldn't find one by their state health department, it was against those rules, and therefore, they did not fluoride the water, because they couldn't find anybody that would say it was safe for humans. And so, the years had passed, and a lot of cities had not, or districts had not fluorided. So I think that's what this letter is attempting to do, is to push them into either stepping up to the plate and saying it is safe or it is not. And if they say it's safe, then look out.
Mickey.
All of us are at this table because the people, our people, have spoken. They don't want fluoridation. They have told us, they have been here, they have emailed, they have called, they've had things in the newspaper, and mostly, they have voted. We don't need to have an ordinance or a resolution to do the will of the people, which is to not fluoridate. We need to do anything and everything we possibly can to end fluoridation before it starts, as long as it's legal. Writing a letter to these people saying, the city of Eureka Springs says. things in the newspaper, and mostly they have voted. We don't need to have an ordinance or a resolution to do the will of the people, which is to not fluoridate. We need to do anything and everything we possibly can to end fluoridation before it starts, as long as it's legal. Writing a letter to these people saying, "The city of Eureka Springs says, you want to follow the law? Your law says, obey it." We represent all the people of the city of Eureka Springs. All we're doing is the will of the people, we are signing a letter. That's all that this is. We won't be sued, we can't be sued. There's been one person of the whole population who has said, "Oh, let's fluoride." One, we are doing the will of the people. We need to stop this, because in case, I haven't said it enough times, if fluoridation happens, we are stuck with a 10-year fluoridation contract.
James?
I would amend the motion to ask the city attorney to look this over and bring it to us at the next meeting. And before I put my name on something, I want to make sure that I'm on, not sticking my neck out, excuse me, out of the floor. So I'm going to amend that motion to have the attorney look it over and bring it back to us at the next meeting. Can I get a second on that?
All right. Mickey?
And I'm going to ask him to take five seconds to look at it now, because Carol Boone has a meeting Thursday. It would be really nice to be able to give them a copy of the letter also.
It's addressed to the state health department, it's not addressed to Carol Boone.
It would be really nice to be able to give them a copy also.
I would respectfully ask for more than five minutes.
We'll give you 10.
I think that, yeah, you need-
That's the least we can ask.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. City Attorney, you have your-
Mickey, yours was, no, correct?
No, it was an aye.
I think it was a janitor.
Maybe there's-
It was a sigh.
Yes, it was an aye sigh.
All right, we have, last item is announcement, and probably many of you have been reading in the paper about task force on economic development, and what we're doing, what I'm wanting to do, and what we have been doing, is meeting, and this is a group on tourism and economic development, where we're trying to keep, get everybody together communicating so we, the left hand knows what the right hand's doing. And also, at that same point, where we all recognize that tourism is our main industry, we're also trying to look at areas where we can bring in alternative industry, getting into approaching the universities, education, something that will provide some year-round employment to help boost our economy and our employment around here. So in this respect, this started out with, with David Mitchell and Dee on this group, came out with it, and it's kind of expanded a little bit. But it's kind of came down to a core group. And what I'd like to do is have Terry represent the council, but also represent as retail merchant. Not, this is just really a task force, and out of that, we'll have the city advertising promotion, the CAPC, we'll have the Chamber of Commerce, we'll have Sandy Martin with the C3 organization, who's into the economic development of the area. Jim Nelson has agreed to come on and represent the arts and retail. Randy Wolfenberger is going to come in and help with the lodging portion of it. We're going to also include Jim Morris with the planning commission, because they've been discussing about, you know, our town and our growth, or lack of growth, and this is a time to try to bring everybody all together. And so we're having our meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock over in the auditorium. We'll have a core group, and out of that core group, we'll have some subgroups that will break off into different avenues. We've been, you know, issuing over the last two months about what our problem is, and so we know what our problem is, is lack of people. The solution is more people. And so that's, we're going to break that out and figure out how we can do that and how we can make Eureka Springs more prosperous for 2015. We have several good prospects already come on. As somebody mentioned earlier, we've got a hotel coming in downtown on Main Street, first new commercial building on Main Street in a long time. I can't remember the last time, actually. Main stage was the last remodel, main deal down there. But anyway, so I'm excited about what's going on with that. So that's kind of where, where we are with that, and Terry has graciously agreed to participate in that, and we'll keep him busy, so busy, kind of like me, we'll, we'll be in the forehouse in our, in our businesses with all these meetings. Now, well, I'm excited about it. We've, we've got some great news coming along in all respects. So with that, I think we're down to agenda setting. We'll go around the room, and I'll start over here with Joyce, so Bob won't get hit with the first one on.
I don't have anything.
All right. Anybody got any agenda settings here?
No, I don't have anything this time.
Well, how about council comments then?
David's got his hand up.
Go around the horn.
I have some agenda.
Okay.
Code enforcement, please, in reference to clean city and noise, I'd like to have added.
A discussion of it?
Yes, sir, just a discussion.
I'll second that.
What would, what complete?
Discussion-
Clean city ordinance.
Clean city noise, a code enforcement discussion. A second one would be the Black Bass Dam Park potential under Parks. That ought to get everybody excited.
The, what?
Black Bass Dam Parks potentially being under the jurisdiction of Parks. Is that an appropriate place for?
I think it already is, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
What about the renovation of it and, and the maintenance of it?
The dam itself is probably city property.
City property, so then it comes under, the city has to maintain maintenance.
It's dam.
Scratch it. Then the third one would be, no, that's, that's okay. Yes, I still, installation of water meters, just the number been installed, the number left to be installed, so we'll have an idea-
Update, okay.
An update on that.
Second.
All right, anybody else?
Nothing here.
Derek?
Yeah, back in the fall, I had asked and, and that the planning commission work on a, an ordinance for minimum square footage requirements for residential, as well as residential requirements inside C2, as far as, you know, construction, that, you know, that maybe it should, it should meet C2 code, commercial code, instead of, even though it's residential. Because quite often, what's residential turns into commercial anyway. And so I think that's important, and I don't know what the process to get, to get, you know, I don't know that they've done anything, haven't heard anything, and I don't even know if it was ever presented to them, maybe they can't tell me that, but.
No, and we had no idea why stuff was going on. We needed clarification, I thought they were going to get ahold of you.
Nobody's spoken to me.
And you see, that's for sale, anyway, with or without the cabinet.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know.
They're under the impression they have nothing to do. They canceled this meeting, their next meeting, because they have nothing to do. Meeting tomorrow.
Well, how about, this is planning, this is real planning.
Yeah.
Okay, so your, your item for the, the agenda is to have an update on what the planning commission has done towards?
Yeah, towards it. If not, you know, I'll get with the city attorney and craft an ordinance, you know, I mean, that's-
If you can come to our meeting on the 27th to clarify, it would help, because nobody there understands. And I'm no help, because I don't understand anybody trying to tell me what size my house can be. So it'll be Tuesday, the 27th at six, right here.
Sums it up.
Yeah, I can, I'm sure I can do that.
Would be greatly appreciated.
All right. Anything else? Mr. McLemone?
No, no, that-
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Bob.
Nothing.
All right. All right, going back to city council comments. Now, we'll go back, I'll do the same routine. Joyce?
No.
Mickey?
Oh, yeah.
David?
Hey.
Quick.
Good try, man.
I wasn't quick enough.
Yeah, sorry, you are really late.
Yes, thank you.
For the holidays, I was at my son's house on top of a mountain with no internet. When I got home, the first thing I heard was, "Sweeper quit." Yes, I jumped on the internet. I'm like, oh my God, that was the beginning of my New Year's. What made it even better for a brand-new year is we're having grandchild number 14 sometime this year, and it's a medical miracle, because they couldn't do it alone, and they did it alone. Yes. So my oldest son is having another child.
I think that's more information than I needed.
It's a medical miracle, it's one of those things, you know, it's awesome.
Okay.
I don't think I want to follow that, I'm just going to pass.
Well, do we, congratulations or whatever, we're not sure.
It is, it's awesome.
David, do you have anything?
Not after that.
All right, James?
I'll welcome Bob and-
Yeah, hi, Bob.
Bush?
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you on board, and 2015 looks like a good year, and I'm sure you're happy it wasn't a recession year, that you were taking your health here.
Mr. McLemone?
Optimism, that's, all right, you know, I hope it, that it's, it all shakes out well for us, looking forward to it, that's all.
Bob?
We'll get to adjournment after we've arrived the first meeting. That was my goal.
All right, I got just a couple of things. Little Rock, we are, Eureka Springs is hosting a Little Rock Legislative Luncheon Meeting, February the 3rd. If you're able to go down for it, there's, we try to get a large contingent of people to go down, and it's, it's a good time for us to meet with not only our local legislators, but a lot of other legislators about some of our concerns. Fluoridation, that could be a good topic, you want to pigeonhole some of them. You can go around and even talk to the state health people while you're down there in Little Rock. But I think that is, I'm not sure if that's what day that is.
Tuesday.
A Tuesday. And it's, it's a luncheon, so there's, most of us go down early in the morning, and a lot of us will be carpooling, so if you're interested, holler at me, Mike Bishop, various other people will be going down and doing that stuff. So it's all right, it's really a lot of fun, it really is. The Crenshaw Hotel helps sponsors the luncheon, so it's good food and stuff like that. As far as other things going on, the January 14th to 16th Municipal League will be going on, I'll be going down, and Bob will be going down. Most of y'all have already been, and this is just kind of a refresher course for people who haven't handled meetings and FOIs and things like that, and I'll be going down just to make some contacts more than anything else. January 18th, the movie at the odd, Alfred Hitchcock movie, The Birds. I won't even talk about the bats, but we'll just do The Birds right now. January 19th, the offices will be closed in the observance of Martin Luther King Day. January 22nd through 25th, Ozark Mountain Music Festival. So it's our winter festival kickoff on that. And in the movie at the odd, that night, we'll be psycho. That would be fun, it's auditorium, you know? I haven't seen any of that.
Sitting, yes.
And I want to, you know, take this time to, to thank Morris Payton for his four years of service. He put in a long four years.
How do you?
He did a, you know, he, he left some big shoes to fill, and, but he left also some good things to go on. Yeah, I had to, and Dee Perkypile for his services too. Dee, Dee will be missed, but he's also not far away, and I know where he lives, and I have his phone number. So, but I thank you all for, for this meeting and for, for us going, and right now, let's move to adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I'm favorite?
All right.
All right.
Stuck it all the way to the end.